Call the meeting at order at 7:03. Excuse me, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America. Which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we're going to break for a few minutes to approve the warrants.
Yeah. You should.
All right, so next up on the agenda is citizens' comments. Anyone who actually has any comments on the budget will actually be opening the floor to that later, but any other comments you can make right now?
Okay, so up next is the chair's report. I actually don't have anything to report tonight. I just want to remind everyone that nomination papers for the school committee are still available. See Donna?
Yeah, I'll get the details.
All right, great. And Mike will give the details for that, so I'll hand it off to Mike.
All right. All right, so first up, just think about this, next fall, the district will welcome the class of 2032 to kindergarten.
Oh, my God.
The district's annual kindergarten information night will be held on Monday, March 18th, at 6:30 PM, right here at the Bueker School. And then registration hours will be held at the district offices at Five Skrull Street in Wenham from Monday, April 1st through Friday, April 5th, from 9:00 AM till noon. And then additionally, we'll have registrations from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, 2:00 to 6:00 PM, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, April 6th. Registration information and the required forms are available on the district website, hwschools.net. We want to congratulate our Boston Globe Scholastic Art Award winners. The high school visual arts department and the English department are proud to announce that our students have received two gold keys, six silver keys, and eight honorable mentions in the 2019 Boston Globe Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Established in 1923, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards are the longest-running and most prestigious recognition program for creative teens in the United States. Gold key works will automatically advance to national judging and will be considered for national awards. The gold key work is currently being reviewed at the national level in New York City by panels of creative professionals. The national medal is selected by these panels, by these panelists, will be announced on Wednesday, March 13th. Gold key award-winning work will also be exhibited at the Massachusetts Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Regional Exhibition, and that's at Breed Memorial Hall at Tufts University, from March 16th through March 25th. And the winners from the, recognize, from the, from the Hamilton Wenham, it's not just the high school. So we have Violet Holbrook, who received a gold key. Aiden Heaney, Mackenzie Lippart, and Yu Yang Zhang received silver keys. Miranda Boyd, Margaret Brown, Lily Cassidy, Annabelle Howley, and Olivia Malloy received honorable mentions. And from Miles River Middle School, Maya Beach, received two honorable mentions. And in English, from the high school, Nadehi Pilai received a gold key and an honorable mention. And Megan Amaro received a silver key. And Nora Sullivan Horner received two silver keys. And if you want to see the artwork, you can go to hwfinearts.blogspot.com. We also had some recognition for some of our winter sports. Boys' basketball qualified for their 13th straight postseason this past weekend, and the boys' basketball team will play for a share of the Cal Baker title tomorrow night. And congratulations to Calvin Dalton, who's a HW student-athlete who wrestles with the Co-op for Salem, and he won an individual sectional championship in the 113-pound weight class over this past weekend. And so finally, school committee nomination papers are due on February 25th. So those papers, there's three open seats, and those, the papers are available at the superintendent's office at Five Skrull Street in Wenham. Papers must be returned with at least 40 registered voter's signatures from the towns of Hamilton and/or Wenham on or before 5:00 PM on Monday, February 25th. After those are turned in, the signatures will be verified from the voters' list of the towns of Hamilton and Wenham by Wednesday, the 27th. The candidate must bring their nomination papers to their respective town clerk to be certified that they, the candidate, is a registered voter prior to gathering the 40 signatures from either town. And if you have any questions, you can call Donna Bunk at 978-626-0821.
Has anyone pulled papers yet from Donna?
Nobody's returned any papers yet, so...
Okay, does that mean nobody's taken them out? Or does it just mean none have been returned?
Papers have been pulled.
Okay, that was my question. It wasn't answered that way, so I wasn't sure. Okay.
All right, so up next is the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything?
So the, from, I think what Mike and I had, Mike had said last time, and I, and it was kind of pointed out, we don't have to vote these executive session minutes in, just to say that I've gone through them and they're okay to post for January 24th of 2018, April 25th of 2018, and October 10th, 2018.
Well, it's good that we don't have to, because they've already been posted.
Okay.
You might as well vote, yeah, and they've been reviewed by council as well.
So we don't have any open session minutes to approve tonight?
No, we don't.
Okay.
They will be, we should have them next meeting.
Okay.
All right, so are we going to make a motion to approve these? They're here.
They're here, it's just I made an announcement, and that should suffice, that they've already been posted, they're posted, so we don't need to approve them.
Right.
Because we had made a motion, then it was questioned to, to make sure that this was right, and they said that as long as you make a statement that, that should suffice.
And we're releasing them, that's really what it is.
It's gone through lawyers, it's gone through, I've reviewed them, and they...
All right, so on to new business. I guess we will start the FY20 Budget Public Hearing, excuse me, number two, and we'll start off with the...
Can you start it before the posted time, which is 7:30?
It's not posted time.
It was published in the paper at 7:30.
At 7:26 right now.
So?
It was advertised at 7:30. It's 7:26, so...
Why don't we bump the donations up then?
Sure, you could do the warrants too. Procedure. Yep.
So do you want to do donations?
Donations.
Okay.
So first is friends of, friends of Cutler.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approve or accept the donations from the friends of Cutler for $650 for digital portfolios for grade two, journal prompts and sensory materials for grade one, and purchase of extra books for the grade five book club.
Second.
All those in favor? See, Thomas?
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approve or accept the friends of the middle, Miles River Middle School, Regional High School, donation of $300 for help with the cost of the eighth grade dance.
Second.
All those in favor? Matty Hamis. Just want to, as always, thank the friends group for all the work they do. Excuse me, I was actually just talking about this at home the other day, and, you know, the work these friends groups do really help make, take our district to the next level and really provide a lot of great services for all the students throughout, so we're forever grateful for all the work you guys do. All right, so moving on, let's move to the new warrants procedure. So as we learned, right, so skipping ahead, this is C under new business. On January 10th, the House and Senate actually voted to finally change the general laws concerning regional schools and how the warrants are to be, need to be signed and addressed. So basically, we don't, moving forward, if we make the decision tonight, we actually don't need four people to be signing the payroll warrants and account payable warrants. So what we were sort of hoping would come out of tonight was that we would just vote to have one person represent to sign the warrants, like what used to happen here, and then just sort of report back with, you know, the, just like we used to with the warrant, the single warrant report, vote back to the whole committee. Does anyone have any suggestions or arguments or...
I'd just like to say it's nice to see this finally done after what was probably quite a few phone calls to Brad Hill every week. He's probably happy to stop having that conversation every week, but I'm glad it's done, and, and actually, you know, makes me feel like I've accomplished something, so...
I just actually wanted to make one clarifying point, and Jeff, if you can help me out with this, I believe we would still sort of need to have it on like the every other Wednesday type?
Yes, and nothing else changes, so this adds an option, that's all it simply does?
Yeah.
So you can either have the school committee and... So you can either have the school committee in its entirety approve in advance, a subcommittee approved by the school committee approve warrants in advance, or the committee may designate any one of its members for the purpose of signing payroll warrants, warrants and accounts payable warrants. So nothing else changes, it just provides the committee with more flexibility, and I support this a hundred percent.
So if we were to do this, then there would be no reason for us to continue meeting every other week?
That's correct.
So we could change our meeting schedule back to just twice a month?
Mm-hmm.
Or even change the day that we meet?
It wouldn't necessarily have to be built around the payroll schedule, which is the issue today.
If we voted someone in, and say over the summer, right, where there's always been sort of that gray area, could someone else reasonably fill in, I guess that's about?
So my recommendation to the committee would be to designate a primary person and designate a backup person.
Okay.
That would be the proxy for the primary designate in the event that person couldn't, couldn't make it.
Still would have to be on Wednesday, right?
Yes, the timeline does not change.
They still would have to come in on a Wednesday to do that.
The prior approval does not change, so our cycle, you know, is still, is still the same. But it could be done, you know, late afternoon, for example, as opposed to, you know, during the school committee meeting.
I, I don't mind putting myself out there for this, I know, I am one of the more local people here and have the availability. I tend to stop in to the offices once a week, every, every two weeks anyway, so I don't mind nominating myself or sort of volunteering to do so. And like I said, when I first came on, I was actually the.
Treasurer.
Assistant treasurer anyway, and was responsible for this role, so, so much responsibility. So, yeah, I definitely don't mind doing that to sort of help ease the burden if someone else, like I said, could, like, I'm usually available, but the few weeks that I, a year that I do go away, or, who knows, that's over the summer anyway, would help if someone else.
So long as there's flexibility on Wednesdays, I can do it, too. I mean, if, if it can happen like towards the end of the business day, I can certainly commit to that as well.
Yeah, it's just one of those things that if whoever commits to it, there's no give. Otherwise, four hundred people don't get paid.
Right.
So.
Power.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's, of all, of all the roles, they're all very serious, but this one's very serious. Yeah, if, if the warrant is not signed, by the time we have to send the file, nobody gets paid, including me.
So I don't think us signing it during the meeting has been terribly burdensome, other than the fact that we have to meet more regularly than we would have been. I mean, we were done in fifteen minutes or less, so I just think there's less risk in this, having it at the beginning of the meeting, unless we're going to change our meeting schedule in some way.
Well, that gives us the, it gives us the option at that point.
I will, I will say that it adds a lot of expense, having done here, a lot, thousands of dollars a year in, in additional time.
I would also say.
If we could do it during the business day, during normal hours, it would be, it'd be su, it'd be much more efficient and, and less costly.
When are the warrants ready to be signed?
It's.
Ideally, I like to do it within the context of the business day, so.
No, but like if, are they ready at eight o'clock on Wednesday morning?
Uh, they could be ready by four o'clock in the afternoon. Our hours are eight to four, so I'd like to do it ideally within the work schedule, because the majority of my staff has to hang around.
Right.
Usually when, before the law changed, and we were doing this at an open meeting, Debbie would usually call me, as I was the person doing it most regularly, and say, hey, they're ready, come in when you're ready, and she'd call me when they, they, they were finished printing, and I'd say, hey.
So it's a little different now, Janice, it's payroll, too, in addition to AP, so, yeah, it's a coordinated effort, and whoever the designate is has to come in and sign both at the same time, so it wouldn't be a phone call from one or the other of you, it would be coordinated through the district treasurer who's responsible for both, unlike before.
All right, why don't we, can we get a motion on moving to a single person, see if it goes through or not? Let's see if it goes through or not, and that'll end the conversation. I, I need a motion.
Oh, I move that we approve the, the changing of signing warrants from at the meeting to a single person, the one member of the committee's designate.
You have to name them.
Oh, I nominate Carrie.
All those in favor? All right, all those opposed? All right, it's five-two, the motion passes.
David and Carrie?
I think it should have been David.
It's just Carrie.
Well, I was nominating David.
You nominated Carrie.
Yes, I did, for primary, I was going to nominate.
My trustee backup.
David, secondary, I thought it had to be a second.
Do you want to amend it?
Well, that moves, so then just, I guess nominate.
What I would say is now do a second motion to nominate David as the alternate.
I nominate David to be the alternate designate for signing payroll and AP warrants.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, so I think that's unanimous, great. All right, hopefully our meetings has got fifteen minutes shorter. Okay, so now it is seven thirty-five, so we can officially open the budget public hearing. Excuse me, the second budget public hearing, I'm sorry, and we'll start off with a quick review, if you will, Jeff or Mike?
Sure.
Thank you.
Jump into it? So, good evening.
Should we put that so they can see it? Because we can see that in our packet.
Sure. Then could you pivot it so we all can see?
I just wanted to make sure.
We've got it right there.
We have it.
Yeah, we've seen it before, too.
I can probably do about ninety percent of it.
Once or twice.
Go for it.
Yeah, so we've seen it a few times, Alex is a comedian tonight, so, so, quick overview of where we are in the process, so it's February, the red box in the middle, and tonight, we're scheduled to, for the school committee to adopt its final budget. Once we get past tonight, assuming that the budget's adopted, the, the district treasurer will certify the budgets with the towns, and then the budget will move on to town meeting in Hamilton and Wenham first Saturday in April. So again, real, I'll just brief, brief through this real quick, so superintendent's recommendation, which has, which is unchanged at this point in the process, we did have some conversation at the last meeting regarding whether the recommendation should, should or shouldn't be changed, and at this point, the recommendation stands, so it stands at level service plus an OPEB trust fund funding, plus funding for a school resource officer. What do we mean by level service? Level service is a continuation of current services, activity, and programs of the district. So what does that translate into in terms of gross operating expenses after offsets, just shy of two million dollars, or six point two percent versus the current year budget? Our key assumptions, broken down into major categories, salary costs, we've incorporated COLA, step increases, degree changes, and any other contractual obligations that the district has to any of our staff and union personnel. We've assumed one decrease in elementary teacher head count in connection with a grade fifth bubble, grade five bubble class. We've incorporated retirement staff replacement savings associated with the five retirements that have given the superintendent notice, and we've taken their salaries out, which typically run at the kind of higher end of the, of the salary range, and we've replaced that with kind of a budgeting standard of an M five standard, which is around fifty-nine thousand dollars. We've assumed level funding year to year with all of our grants. From an operating cost perspective, no new services or programs. We've continued to reduce our capital costs in the operating budget, they're now down to a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars versus a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in the current, this current year, two hundred and ten thousand dollars in FY eighteen, and three hundred and twelve thousand dollars in FY seventeen. So there's a few exceptions to the, to the level funding, most notably, a roughly an eight percent increase in our healthcare costs, a thirty-one percent increase in our out-of-district tuition costs that we spoke at length about on January second with our director of student services. The establishment and funding of an OPEB trust fund, we've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget recommendation for the OPEB trust fund. I will note that the annual budget process is the only time the statute reads that a regional school district can fund an OPEB trust fund. It's the only time it can be done. It cannot be done with E and D, it cannot be done with excess funds at the end of a fiscal year, it can only be done during a, an annual budget cycle, and it has to be brought before the member towns of a regional school district. That's in the statute. And then we've got a seventy-three thousand dollar placeholder for a school resource officer. So our debt service expense, as we've discussed several times, the high school, middle school project has been paid off, or will have been paid off by this May, resulting in a, a net decrease in our debt expense of a little over seven hundred, seven hundred and ten K. Debt expense has been increased by a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for the Winthrop Sprinkler project, that was approved by both towns at town meeting last April. So if we look at the primary drivers, you can see that the fully loaded costs of COLAs and steps runs just shy of eight hundred thousand dollars. Added to that is teacher degree changes, that there's twenty-two teachers that have given the superintendent notice of their intent to change degrees or earn an additional degree, which will place them in a different column on the salary scale. The equivalent cost factor for that is a little over ninety-two thousand dollars. Out-of-district tuition costs are increasing by eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. We've talked about OPEB valued, valued at two hundred and fifty K, and the school resource officer at seventy-three. We've gotten our pension fund appropriation notification from the Essex Retirement Board, and that's increasing by seventy-eight thousand dollars. We've got a placeholder for our in-district transportation increasing by sixty-three thousand dollars. I hope to put that out to bid in the mid to late March timeframe. Insurance premiums increasing by eighteen thousand dollars, principally driven by increases in our workman's comp in connection with a number of active claims. And then healthcare costs increasing by just shy of eight percent, or a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. There's kind of two driving factors behind that increase. We've got a six percent placeholder in, for increases in, in our active plan, premium rate increases, and we've got a modest increase in the number of enrollees that we're seeing come through, come through the program, and the net effect is, I think it's seven point six percent increase. On the flip side, we've got, as we discussed in the previous slide, a reduction in our elementary classroom teachers of one, which is the equivalent of fifty-eight thousand dollars in cost savings and anticipated staff retirement replacement savings of a little over a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, for a net-net impact of, in gross operating expenses of two point one seven million dollars over the current year budget. So this next slide, you've seen a few times, it takes the major categories down, down the left-hand side, in kind of, starting with the category where we spend the most money in salaries, and then down to categories with diminishing amounts of money in the budget. The four categories that have been circled, salaries increasing by, I can't see it, but three point two percent, I recall, out-of-district tuition increasing by thirty-one percent, OPEB increasing by a hundred percent, and school resource officer increasing by a hundred percent. The combination of those four categories, it represents almost ninety percent of the year-over-year increase, or about a million nine. So here's our net assessment statement, where it shows, I'm just gonna, I can't see that, Where it shows in the top section, total expenditures, so we've, we're showing an increase in our expense offsets of a little over two hundred K, principally driven by increases in school choice income and circuit breaker income, and then that yields a general operating expense increase of one point nine seven million, or six point two percent over current year budget. And then you've got the debt service expense decreasing by a little over one point seven million dollars, and again, that's associated with the high school, middle school projects coming off the books. The next section is revenues, chapter seventy, base aid increasing modestly, I took that off the cherry sheet. The MSBA debt service reimbursement, that goes away, it was directly associated with the high school, middle school project, so that goes away with the debt. We've got the state transportation reimbursement, I took that off the cherry sheet. Our run rate for Medicaid reimbursement has been running around a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year for the last three years, so I felt comfortable increasing that in the budget up to that level. And then earlier this week, we finally heard from the Mass DOR, we submitted our E and D for certification, I think it was on October fourth, and it took them a while, longer than normal to get back to us with a notification of certification, so we finally received that, and the number that we've, we've been using is spot-on, they certified our submission without modification. So the, the net impact is a net assessment budget of twenty-nine million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, which is an increase of one point four five million dollars, or five point one percent over, over the current year budget. Why don't we go to the next slide? So at last week's meeting, I think I kind of highlighted this, this slide with, when we met with the joint finance committees, so this kind of just breaks down our total net assessment, and then the, the assessments of each of the towns, and it kind of looks over a fairly lengthy period of time to kind of see how we've been running. So our total net assessment, assuming that the recommended budget passes through, because that's the numbers that I've used in this analysis, we've got a five-year increase of five point four million dollars, which is an increase over that span of time of twenty-two percent, which is an annual rate of change of four point four percent in total for the district. Hamilton's total net assessment during that same timeframe has increased by two point two million dollars, or thirteen and a half percent for an annual run rate of two point seven percent. Now, driving a big piece of the numbers. Now, driving a big piece of the numbers for the representative towns is the, what we like to refer to as the enrollment shift impact. So during this five-year period, Hamilton has shifted 1.1 million in assessment costs to the town of Wyndham as a result of the shift in the three-year enrollment calculation. And then Wyndham's numbers over that same five-year period have increased $3.1 million, of which 1.1 million is attributable to the shift for a five-year change rate of 41.2% or an annual average run rate of 8.2%. Pass this guy. So at this point, I don't know if, I'll, I'll pass it back to you, David, for discussion amongst the committee, for a motion, however you guys want to proceed.
Sure. Um, I think the first, I have a question for you, Jeff, a clarifying question.
Oh, sure.
Uh, excuse me, that I, I'm sure other people are interested in. I know that you have been speaking with the town of Hamilton regarding the funding of the SRO, and I know it's still up in the air, but I'm privy to information that some others might not be. If your suggestion was worked out, you know, with, with the town of Hamilton, what would happen with the 73 that's on the, currently on our books?
So, so just to clarify, I haven't, I haven't been speaking with anybody. I was approached after the Ju- Joint Finance Committee by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Sean, and we had a, about a 45-second conversation, and I told him, I had to run. So, and I told him I would send him an email, which I've done.
Right.
Um, I copied you and Gene and Mike on that email, and I included that email in the packet last Friday, so everybody has it, everybody has it.
Okay.
Um, so what David's referring to is a recommend, my recommendation around how we might go about kind of bookkeeping this thing and satisf- satisfying my concerns around, making sure that our financial reporting is sound and meets kind of our expectations with respect to the DESA report, DESE reporting and the end-of-year report. So what I've recommended is that the town of Hamilton provide the school committee, well, I can read the, I can read my letter. Here it is right there. So I'll just read two, two paragraphs. So, "In the longer term, it is important to me that we comply with the regional agreement, particularly the language regarding apportionment, authorization of debt, and budget. For example, Section 4, Section A, Section 3 requires that 'operating costs shall consist of all costs of the district, other than capital costs and special operating costs. In the absence of an agreement that states otherwise, it is not unreasonable to assume that the costs associated with an SRO deployed specifically to the district by a separate legal entity should be categorized as an operating cost of the district and must be included in our budget and financials in some specific capacity. At the same time, I'm equally concerned with the ongoing accuracy of our mandated financial reporting requirements to the Department of Education, particularly the end-of-year report, which is used extensively by the state to report peer district statistics and where its annual submission is directly tied to the ongoing disbursement of Chapter 70 funding. The end-of-year report requires that we certify the accuracy of our submission each year. I take this requirement seriously, and I will never certify something or allow someone to certify something as being accurate if, if I think that it isn't, instilled in my years at PWC. So, that said, I would be comfortable incorporating an annual cost of $1 in connection with the SRO program into our operating budget at some point in the future, as soon as FY 20, under two conditions. First, the Hamilton BOS provides the district with a written communication regarding the availability of HCA funding in FY 20 or a subsequent fiscal year to cover the cost of the SRO program. If the BOS can guarantee funding for FY 20, we can modify our FY 20 budget recommendation. If they can't, my recommendation would be to leave our budget recommendation as-is, and then the school committee would decide whether to move forward with the 73,000 in the budget or not. Secondly, the town of Hamilton and the district execute an agreement, not too dissimilar to the existing agreement with the town of Hamilton and Hamilton PD for the school crossing guard at the high school pursuant to MGL Chapter 40, Section 4A, for the services of a Hamilton police officer to serve as an SRO. The agreement would need to spell out specific terms and conditions, including employment, costs, which would be the $1 annually, and notice. Notice is of particular concern to me, as the district would need ample time to arrange for alternative funding vis-a-vis a fully loaded amount in a future operating budget request. Should HCA funding not pan out in the long run, a one-year notice requirement in the agreement should be sufficient, in my opinion." The agreement that I mentioned above would be in addition to a memorandum of understanding between the town and the district needed to quote-unquote "formalize and clarify the partnership between the district and the town, and Hamilton Police Department to implement an SRO program," end quotes, as outlined in the model memorandum of understanding governing the role of school resource officers in Massachusetts schools that was released on September 5th, 2018 by Attorney General Mar Healy, the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, and the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which you previously referenced. So that was my, that's my recommendation in its entirety.
Okay.
So to answer your question, David, so if, if we were to take the 73 out, that would leave no funding for a school resource officer, so, so where did this all start? This all started with our, Mike, Mike's desire and my desire to have funding for a school resource, resource officer in place for the beginning of the upcoming school year. And it was unclear to us if there would be any funding available through the town or the HCA agreement to enable that to happen. So because of, it was our recommendation, right, and our opportunity to present to the committee what we wanted to recommend, we wanted to include a fully loaded cost so that we could have the school resource officer, regardless of the HCA, in place on day one. So if the committee, so we still don't have clarity, right? So the committee could strike the 73, right, and hope that it plays itself out, could leave the 73, right, and be assured that there would be money in place for a school resource officer or some, some combination thereof? Good?
That's good.
You could leave it, and then if at a later date we do get confirmation from the town of Hamilton, the committee can always vote to vote its budget down by that amount. And you don't need town meeting approval to do that.
Yeah.
So, so that's an option. If we find out in May, you know, through a letter that the money's going to be there for July 1st from the town of Hamilton, you could, you know, take another vote and reduce your budget by 72,999 dollars, and that would, that would work.
All right. That's great.
So there's a, there's a, there's a bunch of options.
Right. Excuse me, um, thank you for actually clarifying.
Oh, no problem.
So I, I know there was a little bit of confusion and a lot of interest in that, so I appreciate you taking the time. So, um, at this point, I'd like to open up to the floor, and actually the table also, if anyone wants to comment on the proposed budget. Well, in fact, in that case, I guess if we have any further discussion here at the table, any other questions you have for Mike or Jeff?
So no one in the audience wants to make a comment? Is that correct? I wasn't sure if that was clear, that that's what David was saying, it's time to make the comment, or you're, it's over, okay?
Good evening, Alex Beegan.
That's a little obscure.
Looks a little wobbly.
Yeah, it's okay, I'm gonna kind of keep a hand on it.
Danny, help him out with the top on that.
Um, you're good, thanks.
Accounting, carpentry.
There you go. That looks safer.
There we go.
There we go.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Alex Beegan, Wyndham resident and chair of the Finance Committee as well, and for the town of Wyndham. So, um, I guess I was most interested this evening to hear your thoughts on any potential updates to the SRO, which, as, as Jeff, as you just outlined, it sounds like there's a willingness to include kind of a token amount for kind of formality purposes for the apportionment, um, kind of need to satisfy the apportionment, correct? Insofar as if it's a district cost, then it needs to fall on the district's operating budget and be distributed according to all other district expenses that roll up to the operating budget.
Yeah, but there needs, in my opinion, right, so there needs to be a corresponding agreement in place that covers all the things that I talked about, right? So if, it, it, it's, it's got to come together with a legal agreement and consideration, so that $1 is consideration for an agreement that needs to be put in place between the district and, um, and the town of Hamilton.
Okay.
At some point.
Yeah, I mean, I think that-
I mean, that, that's separate and apart from a budget. I mean, we're talking about an operating budget tonight, so-
Right.
You could, you could strike it in its entirety and hope to work with some speed with the town of Hamilton to strike up that agreement and get it in place, and, but, but back to my earlier comments, so why did we include the 73? We included the 73 because Mike and I wanted it for the day.
Correct. You wanted it to be effective July 1st.
Right. So with, without the 73 in the budget, in our operating budget, we might not get that.
Sure, of course, and I think the school committee is obviously aware of that when they vote, if they, if they were to vote at any point or opt to strike it from the budget, I think there's a, um, an understood risk that it may not come to fruition as of July 1st.
Right.
Separate matter entirely. Do we have an SRO or not?
And we wanted to take the opportunity of the recommended budget-
Yeah.
-because it starts with administration and then it comes through the committee for modification through the process, with it, with it in.
Right.
That was the, that was the-
Yep.
-strategy that we wanted to take.
Yep, you made that point when you-
Yeah.
-first presented the, the budget recommendation, which I understand. So I guess, I mean, I, I look at it like when we, we've had, obviously, multiple meetings of FinCom, joint from both towns and the school committee administration, and it was a little ponderous that at this late stage, although I understand that you followed up with the Board of Selectmen in Hamilton recently, that we haven't settled this because it, it feels as though you've got three-
Only, only, just to clarify, I didn't follow up with the Board of Selectmen. I've, I sent an email to Sean Farrell, that's it, not the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, okay.
Just to Sean.
Okay, so-
Because he came to me, we had a very brief conversation, and, well, I'm just being clear, I didn't have a conversation with the Board of Selectmen.
Understood, understood, as you stated.
And I would say, other than what we all heard at this table at our last meeting last week, that's all the communication we've really had about Hamilton even intending to fund this.
Right. Certainly, certainly. So, yeah, strike that from the record, you haven't met with the BOS and discussed this, just one-off communication, back and forth, email, whatever-
Right.
-with Sean. In our last joint meeting in this room, I believe, last week, although I'm losing track of all the sessions.
It was.
Uh, the question was raised, I believe, by either Catherine Harrison or Peter Lombardi, they beat me to it, about the SRO. And it was kind of just, uh, it kind of dead-ended, the discussion didn't really go anywhere because the district has it in the budget, Hamilton has it in their budget as a Hamilton employee, and it wasn't clear as to how or when it would be resolved. And it seems like we're still kind of in that state of, the district's recommending it be in the operating budget, Hamilton, as far as I know, um, I, I think I did get a recent update today, possibly from, um, from Joe via Peter, that it's still the plan to have it as a Hamilton employee as well.
There's been no, zero communication.
Right, right. Which is consistent with what you're stating, basically. So we're more or less at sort of an impasse. So I was going to make the brief analogy that you've got three friends at a restaurant who are splitting dinner, two of them are fighting over the check and one of them can't afford it, staring at the other two saying, you know, "I don't have my wallet with me anyway, so figure, figure this out." It's, it's sort of like the position that we're in, obviously. With that said, I can appreciate the, the formality and requirement to if it's a district employee, but I think I made this point in one of our previous sessions, that if it's a Hamilton employee-
No, no, you're misunderstanding. It's not, it's not a district employee.
Or-
It has never been assumed to be a district employee.
A district service that's provided.
It's a, it's a service that's provided to the district, and it's an operating cost of the district.
And that distinction, I think, is where perhaps Hamilton, I can't speak for Hamilton, where they're coming from on this, but I think the only thing I'd add to it is, to your request for, um, in writing from the town of Hamilton, and some sort of assurance or guarantee, which obviously they can't provide, I think is safe to say from Green Meadows, I mean, how, how could you be assured of a future revenue stream via the taxes?
That's the point of it, right?
Right.
So we need to know.
But-
And somebody needs to provide some certainty to us.
Or, or they could simply say, "We'll fund it regardless." I would suspect that legally-
No one has said that.
They, they could hypothetically, I suspect. In other words-
They could hypothet- hypothetically say-
You're looking for assurance it'll be paid for, which is completely within reason of if you were to strike it through budget, and if the school committee actually wanted it with certainty for July 1st, and not in a future year potentially, then it's, I would sus, I would suspect that on Hamilton's side, they could also say, "Well, we don't know if we're going to get the revenue, but we'll fund it regardless." Theoretically, they could, they could make that claim.
Or not.
If they choose not to. Right, right.
So again, Alex, it gets back to the premise of us wanting it in place for this year, up, this upcoming school year, and therefore we embedded it in the recommendation, in lieu of all those hypotheticals that you just made.
Right.
Right? If the school committee isn't interested in moving forward with our recommendation, that's up to them, but no one's been able to tell us that the money's available. Mike and I are encouraging the school committee to move forward with an SRO program, and therefore, our recommendation is that we include the money in the operating budget for FY 20.
Right, right. It is unfortunate at a certain stage, yeah.
It's pretty simple, right?
Yeah, we're, that we haven't resolved this.
Nobody's saying we can't take it out of, reduce the budget at a later date if Hamilton figures out what it's doing and actually gives us some clarity.
Right.
Sure, sure. Seems reasonable.
So just to put this in context, we're talking about less than two-tenths of a percent of our budget.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I understand that it's 73,000, the small percentage that-
And it's, I think, 27,000.
27,000.
Yep, yep. But I also view it as 73,000 plus, you know, compound growth of 5% annually in perpetuity in the books unless anything changed.
Which is well worth the safety and security of our students and our staff.
Which, well, that's, 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 that has been brought up at this very point in time, right?
But that's the way we're looking at it, right?
Sure, sure. And, and I'm, and again, early on, there was a discussion, well, if Hamilton were to subsequently generate the revenue from the impact fee for Green Meadows, and we could take it off the books, and I feel the technicality of that would be back in the same place, actually a much more difficult position to try and unwind any, any, any apportionment that was in place at this point, if you were to have it as a district service apportioned. If Hamilton's willing to pay for it, we would, we would strongly consider, strongly urge you to consider allowing Hamilton to do so, if, if they're able to, and if they're willing to make a commitment to do so, on their terms, subject to some assurance that they're going to get tax revenue or, or, or not, I suppose. That was the primary question that I had, or point I was going to make, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well. I think we've given a, kind of a high-level overview of where we're at in the budget process. Just generally speaking, we've got, um, in terms of where we are, we've got all of our department head meetings out of the way, we've met with the Board of Selectmen, we've met with you multiple times, and we're wrapping up a few matters, and we'll have more discussion deliberation, as we have this week in this room, as to our remaining capital and expense items, and then we'll be much clearer as to where we are with respect to our levy limit capacity, shortfall, and override, which I'm happy to speak to, but I realize we're here to, here from you.
So I have a question for you.
Sure.
So, a, as I think about our presentation, your presentation last week, and I think about your levy limit budget?
Yep.
Um, I struggled with it a bit in that, so the levy limit budget for the school only included a 1.4% increase.
Correct, 1.35.
Which, which, which was $35,000 shy of the value of the enrollment shift. So there, there's not even enough in-
Yeah.
-the oper, so could you talk-
Sure.
Could you talk to us about that?
In the, in the simplest terms, excuse me, one second. In the simplest terms, the town levy limit capacity increased 680,000 for FY 20 from FY 19. So that's including, obviously, new growth and two-and-a-half percent increase, so 680.
Which is what, what percent?
Um, the percent of the levy limit increase?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't have it handy, but dollar terms, that's what it increased. Could easily get it for you, I'm happy to follow up with it. So local services, level service expenses increased 545,000 for the town. So 680 minus 545 gives you $135,000. So, six-eighty minus five-forty-five gives you a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, okay? That's our excess levy limit capacity, after you factor it-
But the schools represent a little over fifty percent of the town's budget, right?
Correct, I'm just saying, if we fund town, so generally speaking, we look to fund town-level services, okay, if that's, if that's the direction that we take, and then we, because half our budget is for the schools, we apply what we can to the schools, what we can afford up to our levy limit, same structure as last year with the article. Any levy limit shortfall, we have an override, as we will this year.
And you put it all on the schools?
We're, we're funding our town levy limit budget-
Right.
Affording what we can of the schools, the difference is our school operating override, just as last year, sa- same exact thing as last year. So that's, let me get back to the numbers, so that's a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, we have a six-hundred-ninety-four thousand dollar increase to the town of Wenham, which is six-point-nine percent, right? You had it up on your slide there before, the nice thing is on a ten-million-dollar budget, one percent is a hundred thousand dollars. So six-point-nine percent minus one-point-three-five percent gives us the, um, uh, five-point-six percent, which is our override, five-hundred-fifty-nine thousand.
I guess what I'm struggling with is attributing the entire override to the schools? When, when it wasn't-
So, you're right, so Jeff, oh, no, absolutely.
When it wasn't, uh, appropriated a proportionate share of the in, of the in, levy limit increase, that doesn't seem-
So, we, we could attribute none of it, we could alternatively cut six-hundred thousand from the town side and just have to be a town operating override.
Hypothetically, right?
Hypothetically, sure, yep, yep.
It just seems odd, that it wasn't sufficient enough to even cover the shift.
It would have been if we could afford it, so last year, your, so, the structure is the exact same as last year, generally, most likely, although we haven't settled exactly where the, what the warrant article structure will be, but, um, it's similar in, presumably in terms of the structure, which is a levy limit budget, which funds town, it's actually not level services, it represents a reduction in level services, because we still have, we have a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand indiscretionary, uh, expenses, uh, and a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand indiscretionary capital expenditures, some of which re- represent, which are not included in that figure, the figures that I gave you thus far, which we're talking through now, some of these things are like twenty-two thousand dollars for a roof on the Council of Aging, eleven thousand dollars for firefighter protective gear, things like that, things that would normally be in the operating budget, but because we're so lean on the operating budget, we're considering them discretionary capital and discretionary expense items.
We've, we've left, we've left those kinds of things entirely out of our operating-
Not saying you haven't, we have too thus far, in building our levy limit, uh, le-, excuse me, level services budget, but to make that point, because it's technically a little bit below level services, if you consider those things would generally be in the operating budget for a level services budget. Um, it does include about a hundred thousand dollars of discretionary capital, um, excuse me, non-discretionary, that we're contractually obligated to pay, things like, you know, lease-to-own agreements where we're in year two, year three, something like that. So, um, so last year, the override was structured in much the same way, the amount was three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. This year, because of free cash issues, because of the crowding out of the discretionary spend, and because of the operating budget has increased, when half your budget increases seven percent year over year, obviously, much of it apportioned to the, uh, related to the apportionment formula, um, which we're, we've been well aware for a long time, we're not kind of placing blame or anything, or, or, that is what it is. If we had higher levy limit capacity, more of it would go to schools. We owe five-fifty-nine, if we could afford five-hundred-and-fifty thousand of it, we had a nine-thousand-dollar override, that's the way it would be structured, in, in building a town, uh, level services budget. Alternatively, however, like I said-
Can you actually call it a level service budget when you're not even accounting for the, the, all of the students that are, um, coming in from the enrollment shift? Right, so, a, a, and I think that, that's the point to be made, and, and, while we understand, you know, the, the great constraints that the town's going through, um, you know, to push it all off on schools is a disservice, only in the fact that, you know, when, when you're saying it, it's a level service budget, you're not including the, um, the enrollment shift that you know would be part of a level service budget.
So, what, what's the alternative?
To actually go to town meeting and say, "Look, we need an operational override that is not just school-based, that is not school committee's, um, I don't wanna say fault, but that's how it feels from this side of the table, um, that you wanna present something to town meeting that says, "The schools are running away again," that, uh, you know, we're trying to-
We never used those words.
You have not, but that's how I feel sitting on this side of the table.
Sorry, I didn't mean to speak over you.
Not a problem.
Um, but, you know, that, that perception of when you're, when you're actually saying it's a school-based override, it's solely a school-based override, that it's that perception that, you know, the school and the district is spending uncontrollably, and, you know, when, I, I'd like to think that we've actually had a really good conversation about where these costs are coming from and what the drivers actually are.
You've told us where the drivers are, absolutely, you know, but it doesn't change the fact that half our budget is, is increasing at rates that are unsustainable, without an, an override year after year, last year, this year, next year, none of us will change.
But that's not bec-, that's gotten, but that's not because we, we can't control out-of-district tuition. DESI sets the tuition rates, that's not, not that-
That's not true.
The people at this table don't wa-, don't worry about it, because we do, we honestly struggle with that number, but we have such a low levy capacity limit, and that's not something the people sitting at this table can do anything about, and that's where the, that's where the budgetary problem is coming from this year, and to present a town meeting that it is a school-only, or as town meeting may look at it, "School asked-for" override is not what I would consider a fair way to present it to town meeting.
We're presenting to town meeting, as we did last year, potentially this year, an override which fully funds the school district budget. I mean, the lion's share of the budget increases at rates that are unsustainable. Now, look, we could cut three-hundred thousand dollars from the town side, cut, and, and then, and then fund three-hundred additional of the school and have the same size override, but we're not doing that, we're, we're, we are deciding not to cut town services, just like you're not cutting services.
That's not really the point, the point is, is that instead of make, instead of presenting the override to town meeting as an operational override for both town-level services and school district budget overruns-
But that's-
You are presenting it to town meeting as a school district operating override only.
Well, we're, however, we, if this is about naming it, perhaps we can discuss the name along with the warrant article structure, the warrant article structure is a very technical matter, it simply refers to the, the, the apportionment, right? I, I'm sorry, it refers to the appropriation of funds for various budgetary needs.
And as a finance guy?
I think you're jumping, I think you're jumping ahead a little bit more with respect to how it's positioned within the communities.
Um, no, it's-
We're not there, we're not there yet in terms of positioning this in any way, shape, or form.
But as you position it for town meeting, if you position it whether one way or the other, will give a specific impression to people who, as much as I, as much as people who go to town meeting are-
Sure.
-paying attention, they're not as engaged in some of the numbers as you and I are, because we're in these meetings every, every week, every two weeks. So depending on how many people actually watch these meetings, how many people actually go to the warrant articles and are, how much people read into how we position these things, will determine what kind of reception we get, and I, and, and so I would-
With, with all due respect, how we position all of this is immaterial, we're talking about-
It's not immaterial.
The budget line items, we're not, we're not positioning it in any which way.
You are positioning, because you are positioning a budget that says, "We're funding the entire towns and we're using the override to fund the schools."
We are, we are funding the town's hardly level services budget.
It's not level service, because you are defraying, if I remember the number correctly, a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars of capital needs.
Defraying, "We're not funding."
Exactly, um-
Well, those, those, those are, those are discrep-, okay, there are discretionary components we're still talking about, so perhaps the override is even larger, that could very well be the case as well.
You know, if you went to town meeting with an override that included your level service budget and our level service budget, and you had a town-
That's what, that's exactly what we'll be doing.
Okay.
We will be providing a level services budget, potentially with other items, we don't know yet, we're still in, we had hours of deliberation seated right where you are earlier this week, if you happen to watch it, um, or you still can, and we'll be meeting with the Board of Selectmen tomorrow, this is still ongoing, we're still finalizing our budget process. We will be presenting a levy limit budget that funds the town level services ballpark with a tremendous shortfall, almost twice what it was last year, for the schools, that, it's, it's that simple, to fund the remainder of the schools. We're not putting out a billboard on Main Street saying, "This is a school override." I think, I think you're, you know-
But to call it-
Due respect, you're, you're sort of jumping ahead to how this is being positioned, our job is to craft a budget that meets the needs of the towns, including the schools.
It's not really jumping ahead, just in, in that, you know, last week, when we met last week, Alex, actually, one of the posted agenda items was, um, discussing Wenham's school override, so that's how it was posted, so, it, so, to say that we're sort of jumping ahead, I, I, I don't wanna think that, 'cause it, that's where it came from, and, and, and what we wanna do now is actually say that, like, that's not a fair assessment on the district, and, you know, we obviously wanna work with you here, but, you know, to, to put that out there, you have to understand that it does come with consequences, and-
Consequences.
Well, it comes with consequences of the public opinion, thinking that, you know, school spending is out of control.
If you have a levy limit budget, okay, a non-operating override budget that funds level services on the town, part of the schools, we of course need to, contractually, right, as part of the agreement, we need to provide an option to the town's people to fully fund the school budget, and the only difference in that override bud-, article is to fund the remaining of the school's budget, it sounds like a school override. I'm just, I'm just stating that, I'm not, I'm not looking to make a bigger deal out of it than it is. Much the same structure as last year is presumably where we land, there are other options that we're considering, I mentioned, we're still talking through, we'll still be discussing with the Board of Selectmen prioritization of potential items, look, of that hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand discretionary expenses in the form of, um, you know, salary adjustments and the like, for eight, one-eighty-eight and one-eighty-seven for capital, obviously, we wouldn't decide to put that nearly three-eighty in the budget, we can't, I mean, at most, maybe a hundred thousand, but who's to say what, where that will land? But my point is, the structure is, is virtually the same as last year. Now, how to fix Wenham's problem going forward with regard to, not, it's not that our levy limit is very small, I mean, we're increasing, you know, the two-and-a-half percent that we can, right, under Prop two-and-a-half regardless, we are taxing, we're increasing the tax burden on our residents year after year, as much as we can, and, and then some last year, and we'll have another override this year. One option that we're considering is a special purpose stabilization fund for apportionment formula impact to the town of Wenham, which, in my opinion, is, is absolutely something worthy of consideration, wherein we would temporarily increase levy capacity to lessen the burden on overrides for any matters, school and/or town, to have funds which can then serve to offset the hit that Wenham has, as your slide earlier previously showed, you know, well north of a million dollars over the past four or five years, in a twenty-million-dollar budget, crowding out all other, many other, uh, expenditures. If we were to do that, that's one option that might help us, it's not going to help this year in terms of our current situation, if anything, we might be asking the towns, the residents and taxpayers to consider more with respect to an increase in the levy limit, but one that isn't necessarily permanent, as is an override. I mean, a seven percent increase as, as with last year, and that's 'cause debt's rolling off, it'd be nine-hundred thousand otherwise, it'd be nine percent. We simply, I mean, if, we're not out there saying, "Oh, the schools are," I think you said, like, run, budget overruns or anything like that, not whatsoever. If, if, we're not picking apart your budget, saying there's a lot of excess fat, we have questions, we raise them, you answer them. I realize that much of this is, and we all do, you know, contractually based, special ed, there are lots of things that are beyond one's control, um, and I'm sure with that said, that you'd rather spend money on educational programs and not OPEB and an SRO, that goes without saying, just like on the town side, which is really a shared budget ultimately, it's not really one side versus the other, we'd prefer to be doing a lot with our capital expenditures too that we can't. So we're, we're, we're in the same boat, same taxpayer, and I, I ask that you recognize that and not think that we're necessarily, I mean, if it is a school override, and does that put you back a step? Of course, you're gonna make the same case for your budget as you would at town meeting and for the wonderful work that the district is doing in educating kids regardless. We're, we're in a situation where we need an override to fund your budget and ours. I'm less, I'm, I'm concerned about the warrant article structure, I'm concerned about any pieces that, any, any, every penny on Wenham's side that gets appropriated or transparencies-
You don't need an over-, you don't need the override to fund your budget, that's the difference.
Well, like I said, we could-
That's what you just said, and that's not true.
To the point, to the point I made earlier, we could, we could cut on the town side, and if-
But as it's currently structured, Alex-
Yeah.
You do not need an override to fund your budget.
We don't, we don't need an override to fund our town-level services.
That's correct.
Our budget includes the schools.
That's correct.
Oh, it's, we don't have a town budget and a school budget, it's one budget.
But when you go to town meeting and you present an override-
Right.
You have two warrant articles.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right, it's the same budget, one just funds up to levy limit.
Technically not the same budget.
Well, what, true, there are two separate options-
Right.
But it's one budget.
That's what we're referring to.
It's not like we have a town budget and a school budget, right?
So, Alex, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, um, so I understand the philosophy behind what you're presenting, um, and I can understand, um, where you would, could come to that kind of a, a philosophical decision, 'cause you have to decide how you're gonna fund things. Um, so, to me, it would seem fair if we were to split between the town and the schools this six-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, um, in, in, you know, somewhere around a fifty-fifty split, because if the override doesn't pass, the only budget that's gonna have an impact is the school's budget, Wenham's budget won't.
We're not, Michelle, we're not seeking three-hundred K in cuts, I, I stated that as a hypothetical.
No, I know, no, no, I'm, I'm-
But to be clear, because we're not taking that policy direction.
I know that, I'm, I'm, I'm saying-
Okay.
I'm saying if we were to come to a position where we could represent around, um, two-hundred-and-five thousand dollars in cuts, which would, to Wenham, which would account in our budget to about six-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, do you believe Wenham would be willing to put forward an override where half of the override amount is for town expenses and half of the override amount is for school expenses? Or do you feel that the philosophy is set and it's really all the override has to go to the schools and all of the burden of that not passing has to fall on the schools?
I, I, Michelle, this isn't-
And I know you're one person.
This isn't a philosophical matter in any way, shape, or form, it really isn't, it's a policy matter, and we are already not funding in, in our current budget, the town's annual capital needs recurring, which are in the order of two-hundred thousand dollars. So, when you kick that, it may not be make or break in any one given year, when you kick it and kick it and kick it, then the town's in a crummy situation with respect to having, not having funded its needs on an ongoing basis. And so, we have responsibility to the taxpayer, it's not the taxpayer who cares about the schools, or the taxpayer who cares about the, the, the town services, it's all of that combined because we have one budget. That, that's how it goes.
But Alex, it's not one budget, if your fir-, let's call it Article One is the levels, the levy limit budget-
Levy limit budget.
If that passes-
Yeah.
Your, your town budget passes-
Correct.
If Article Two, which is the school override-
Yeah.
Fails-
Right.
Our budget fails.
I'm, I'm well aware of that, this was the exact same situation that we were in This was the exact same situation that we were in last year at this time, and we're all we're all understanding of those repercussions.
But last year, I don't believe you had, you had allocated a one point three percent increase in the levy limit piece.
Because we had more levy capacity. We had more excess levy capacity. We, absolutely, it was funding the town level services and there was more left over to fund of the school's budget. Like I said, it's not, we, show me where the decision was to only fund one point three percent where we spent more on the town side. I've already told you, it's below level services. So exactly, there isn't. That's because we are under increased budgetary pressures more so than last year. There's there's no, I mean, watch our dozens of hours or come through, you know, Peter's memos are phenomenal, and we'll provide any budget documentation, which, you know, we're happy to receive from the schools as well. And you'll find that it's not like it's, we've funded more of the town services and called it anything other than level, uh, level services. It's it's actually a little bit less than that.
It becomes two budgets when you separate them out.
Sorry?
It becomes two budgets when you separate them out. If you were to call the levy limit budget and you were to say Article One is for levy limit capacity budget, our budget is at X, town and school, and you were to say Article Two is the override of X, town and school, then it's not two budgets, then it's one budget. But the minute you separate it out to Article One funds the entire town and a little bit of the school budget, and Article Two is the levy limit override to finish funding the school budget, then it becomes two budgets. Whether or not you want to philosophically argue the difference, you've separated them out.
I frankly don't.
And you've separated them out in the minds of people at town meeting. And so either we have one budget or we don't. But you can't have one budget and separate out the schools for the school's only override.
So I'll ask it again, what is the alternative?
To fund the levy limit budget at X and to fund a operating override, town and school at X, whatever those numbers happen to be, but you make it one budget. Whatever the apportioned piece of Wenham's school responsibility is, plus whatever level service is for the town of Wenham, and you make it one number, and you you take that one number, you subtract what your levy capacity is, and then you make that Article One, and you make the other Article Two.
You you basically described the process that we had last year and this year, up to the levy limit for for an article that funds a levy limit budget.
Yes, except that when.
Anything that's required above and beyond that.
If you, except when you name it.
Again, this this isn't about naming.
And you call it a school only override, it becomes a school only override.
I I I can appreciate the sensitivity of of the the naming of it and the positioning of it and the proposition of it. I I don't think that's what we're here to discuss. I think that.
I think you did that already when you made it an, when you made it a, a.
I'm not trying.
Point on the agenda last week.
I I don't think we're trying to shy away from the fact that we would refer to it as a school override, just as we did last year.
Yes, and that's our point. That's our point.
But we're but we're not, but we're not impress.
That's our point. Our point is that you are announcing it as a school override as opposed to an operational override.
Well, it's a school operating override, if that'll make you feel.
No, it's a town operating override that includes the school budget.
All right, we're just going back and forth here for, um.
Thank you.
Yo, and I apologize, you know, I I think we've done a great job working together this year. I I think what this side of the table would really like you to know is that it's more than just semantics, and and that should be something that the, you know, that that you're thinking about as you move forward on how you actually want to do that, is is that it, you know, the school can really bear, end up bearing. I don't want to say an unfair weight in that, because I do understand that we are fifty, you know, above fifty percent of the driving, yeah, the drivers there, but, you know, it that the last thing we want to do is really have any sort of confusion within the town, which happens very easily on, you know, sort of any sort of that that someone might take out of control spending or or the fact that, you know, there is going to be two overrides in a row, you know, that that can weigh ne- very negatively on the s- the school system. And, you know, like I said, it's not just semantics in it's in in naming it as a school override.
So, yeah, I take I take a whole lot of pride in, in the Wenham FinCom's exceptional level of transparency and deliberation in discussing the matters of the town. We don't, we don't opine on your budget. We don't deliberate on the items in your budget, right? That's your job. You all vote on your budget. We have not discussed what the what the FinComs or in Board of Selectmen, Selectmen couldn't have done so either, since the warrant article structure hasn't been determined yet, come to a, come to a final recommendation to the townspeople, which is our job, right? We just recommend favorable action or unfavorable action. We haven't even done that. So the school budget is one part of our town budget that we are on the receiving end of. Of course, you're willing to listen to us and hear our thoughts and opinions, which we appreciate in forms such as this and in all other meetings, but it's one part of our town budget. And so while I can, I can appreciate where you're coming from, you're saying, well, why don't you cut from the town side and we'll share the burden? We're presenting a level services budget.
That's not what we're asking.
And that and that and that that's, that's in part a policy direction, right? I mean, that that kind of goes without saying, that that's the policy that the town is pursuing. But guess what I'm saying is, we're not, we're not seeking to, I think you're jumping ahead to, forgive me, but perhaps the the thought is that by calling it a school override, we're seeking that the townspeople not approve it. And and I think that's, and I think that's a little unfair.
You give it a, you give it an identity when you call it that. You give it a voice and you give it a.
Well, you give it a voice, frankly, because it's your budget and you're you're a school committee member who's been elected to.
No, if you call it a school override, it's got a.
So, you know.
So we would.
It's not my.
I would, so.
You know, role. I'm not on the school committee.
Alex, is, this is sort of a procedural question.
Sure.
So the FinCom is not going to decide what portion of the total budget goes into an override and what portion goes into the the levy limit budget. That's going to be decided by the Selectmen and then the FinCom are going to make a recommendation?
No, together we will.
Okay.
So, Michelle, I mentioned how there are about three hundred and eighty thousand of discretionary expenses, which we are considering prioritizing for the FY twenty budget. Now, it goes without saying that they won't all be in it, right? But there there might be some items like firefighter protective gear, SCBA, right? Twenty-two thousand dollars, something like that, which might get in.
On the police cars, those kind of things.
Uh, yeah, no, not police car, that's in the, that's in the normal operating budget. We replace one of our frontline three vehicles per year, forty-two thousand dollars. So all the operating budget stuff is more or less set for level services. It's really straightforward in terms of savings where, I mean, look, we're not here to talk about leaf pickup, but tomorrow night, we will be with BOS to try and save money.
Wow.
Right? So, I can't tell if you're being facetious or not.
Blasphemy, my friend.
Probably a lot of people would care. I'm not here to talk about that at all and nor do we want to spend your time. But I guess my point is, if any, if we, let's say we decided that thirty-five thousand dollars went in, then a hundred thousand dollars would be used to fund the school piece. And that the the levy limit budget with an increase, excuse me, the override amount with an increase. So we're not seeking to place any undue burden by saying, oh, yeah, that, all of that's going to go in, right? We're going to put a hundred and thirty-five grand in, and then a hundred percent of the increase of the schools, a six point nine percent, or six hundred and ninety thousand increase in the school apportion assessment year to year, is all in the schools. That's not, that's not our our motive or any way of driving factor. But the levy limit budget is kind of the policy direction, which is exactly what we did last year, and it funds town level services.
Right, all right, so and and just to sort of wrap up.
I'm repeating myself.
But, right, and but, you know, to recap, that a levy limit budget from the school perspective would be a, only allowing a one point four increase to the town of Wen- Wenham?
Sorry, repeat that last part.
One point four, what?
One point four percent.
Yeah, one point three five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah, and it, just as it was short last year. And and frankly, even though the mag, order of magnitude higher and like you're you're, if it fails, we know that you're up against three X that roughly, we're not, it's not like we think this is trivial or immaterial whatsoever. We're well aware of that fact, and it was the same last year with three hundred and thirty-one thousand, you're looking at backing out nine ninety-three.
Right.
Or whatever, potentially. So we get that this is a huge impact that the school committee administration is facing. And I I I don't, like where I sit all the time, and I wouldn't want to be in your shoes either, because we have a massive issue with respect to funding our total town budget inclusive of the schools.
And so the, just the last thing I wanted to, um, to just mention, you know, like I said last week, it would, I tried to get out last week is, was getting the, trying to, you know, read the room when we had everyone in the same room, and Hamilton is very forward in being in favor of the, you know, OPEB and the, um, SRO. And, you know, where the Wenham was very non-committal. And I thought, you know, like I said last week, and like I'll repeat tonight, I think that's, it's sort of important to sort of gauge that interest because, you know, as a majority of this board are members of, residents of Wenham, rather, you know, and even those who aren't, we are definitely always keep in mind the fiscal restraints of the towns. But, you know, and and like I say, we we, when we don't look at these numbers lately, moving them forward, it it's important, I know, some members even more than others of the board, that we do get, we have like a partnership moving forward that, at least understanding where these numbers are coming from. And and that that's sort of what we're looking, you know, I guess you'd be the representative here in, you know, in that, looking to see, you know, what, these numbers are high, obviously, we, they're not one point four, uh, one point three five percent. And, you know, and here we are, a few minutes away from making a motion to.
Sure.
To vote it in.
Yeah, so I I I follow what you're saying, David. Are you asking me for kind of our general support of the budget?
Uh, I'd love your support. I I've actually said this all the time, like, if I could, if I ever got, you know, how many are on your board, like, five votes of support, you know, for this budget, I would feel.
Here's what, but we don't vote on the budget, that's your job. And I said that earlier. We don't, we don't, we don't discuss whether or not you should include certain things. We're not, you're the professional educators in the school committee who's who's making the informed decisions as to what's best for our our children in the schools. And so if I saw something that I thought was egregious or a problem or or a glaring issue, I would point it out. That's our, that's our role, and the townspeople who are paying attention, and anyone else who is too. So that's not the claim, it's a matter of affordability. I mean, the level services is like, is, you know, five percent, generally speaking, plus per year, and as, and and of course, you fold in apportionment, which we never will complain about, because I believe it's fair, and if we're on the hook then now for seven percent because of more students, that's great, is what it is, that we we will, Wenham will pay its bills, right? But in order to do so, if we're up against Prop two and a half, we need an override, we need an override. That's how it goes. So more specifically, SRO, I find the the quagmire of the Hamilton thing just ponderous, but I don't have a role in it. I don't have a dog in that fight. Frankly, I I don't. There's, there's nothing really I can say about it. The other piece is OPEB, which I think is fiscally responsible, but very difficult to afford. So I don't think it's a bad move, generally speaking. I don't know how we're going to afford it, and I think you all also are in the same position, and we're going to find ourselves in the exact same position next year as we as we did, as we did last year. So it's not, it's not a matter of, you know, questioning your budget other than the affordability of the of the the year-over-year rate of rate of change.
Which is.
Which you're, which you're aware of.
Right.
And much of it's contractual and special ed and all that stuff, so.
All right.
So, thank you for letting me occupy so much time up here at the podium, and I appreciate your questions, and hopefully I was able to provide some net new information.
And just to understand, so tomorrow, there's a meeting of the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, exactly. Just to, my suspicion is that.
On Valentine's Day?
Just like the last year.
You are the biggest bunch of lovable people ever.
We're, we're two, three meetings a week at this point.
Okay. And you're going to be meeting here?
So it's not many other days.
You're going to be meeting here, is that what you said?
No, we were here on, last, whatever, because we couldn't get our room.
Will you be at Town Hall tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll be at, we'll be at Selectmen's Chairman's. And I don't think you're going to find that we're going to finalize, you know, that BOS is going to finalize anything.
Right.
But we are seeking to help them prioritize, as we deliberated here for two hours a few nights ago.
Okay.
Those discretionary expense and capital items.
Okay.
And and we do so, as I think you would find if you watched the tape from a few days ago, without, without trying to trade off against the schools. We don't cast a value judgment on, well, this is more important than the schools, or this is less important than the schools. It's not how it works. We have to consider all items individually. And and Wenham will pay its bills, inclusive of the of the schools.
I'll, I'll make sure Tim McCarthy quotes you on that. Thanks.
Which part?
Whatever I need.
Any of it. I didn't know which part you were referring to.
Thanks a lot, Alex, I appreciate it.
Hi, Stacy Verge from Hamilton. I just wanted to say that I'm completely in support of the SRO, and now that I've listened, I sent some emails, I got some emails back that I truly did not understand at all, but I just wanted to say that after hearing Mr. Sands and Dr. Harvey speak about putting a placeholder in, I think was the right word, of seventy-three thousand, that's what I'm supporting. That's what I would like to see the school committee vote for. I think it's crucial. It sounds like without that in play, perhaps it won't happen for July first. That's not what I want. I've spoken with many people who send many emails and then forwarded them to me, they got the same responses, and I know that they were trying to say the same things, they did not understand the financing, but if I could have dragged them all here, they would have said the same thing. So I'm a hundred percent sure of at least the people I spoke with. So that's it, short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mahalia, did you get her phone? All right, thanks. I I I didn't hear it, so I just wanted to make sure.
It's my mom.
It's her mom.
She's Lauren's mom.
Lauren's mom.
Put that in the mix.
It's a, it's a.
Lauren's mom.
Let the record be fine.
Right, so, all right, so I guess now is.
Motion and then discuss.
Right, um, put together, yeah, let's make the first motion and then we can have a discussion. And just remind me to make me to have a discussion.
I always do.
Sometimes I move too quickly and it's always after the fact.
So you want, you ready for the first motion?
Please.
The Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee approves a fiscal year twenty total general fund expenditures budget of thirty-four million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. This amount includes general fund operating expenses after offsets in the amount of thirty-three million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, and general fund debt service expenses in the amount of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, I mean, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. Furthermore, the gross operating expenses of the district before offsets have been allocated to the DESI-defined account, accounts according to the summary of, by DESI category chart included in this budget presentation dated February thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Second?
So I felt very confident at our last meeting when Joe said that Hamilton had the money for this SRO in their budget and that Hamilton was willing to pay, and I feel like we should accept the offer for them to pay, and if it's necessary for us to allocate one dollar for that, that would be what I would do. So I would suggest that we change that amount from seventy-three thousand dollars to one dollar.
I would say that as they have not gotten back to Jeff, they haven't replied either way, so if it's there, we can reduce the assessment before we hit town meeting if we hear back from them. We also can reduce the assessment after town meeting if we hear back from them, any point between now and whenever we hear back from them, as the budget doesn't kick in until the first of July. This just guarantees that the money is there for the first of July, regardless of how long it takes Hamilton to get back to us.
I agree with Michelle. I think we need to reduce the amount and do a placeholder for a dollar.
I'd rather have a placeholder for seventy-three thousand dollars and reduce it by a dollar, reduce it down to a dollar. I think, I would rather see some level of assurance from the town that they have an HCA in place, that the money is available and when is it going to come in, and that they have, they started in good faith negotiations with the school committee to, to have a SRO in place. I'd rather see some movement as opposed to just talk. That's what I would say.
Right, and I mean, it's important to, remember, the town of Hamilton can decide to fund this, and they don't need to have the ACA in in place if they, that's what they decided to do. You know, I'd like to reiterate, and and like I said, I I've said before, I don't want to see this budget pass or fail based off of an SRO. But, you know, I actually believe that it's in, that Hamilton is acting in good faith, excuse me, to fund this solely themselves. With that, that's why it's really easy for me to say we should vote for this with the seventy-three thousand dollar placeholder, because I do believe we can get the wheels Because I do believe we can get the wheels in motion, and it still gives us, you know, months to actually work out the details in between, um, the town and the district. You know, like I said, I, like Michelle said, um, you know, I believe that, um, you know, Joe was speaking in good faith about being able to finance it through the town, but, you know, and like I said, I don't wanna see this pass or fail be, because of an SRO, and, and, and what's in reality, you know, $27,000 to the town of Wenham, right, 'cause that's really the difference here. And, um, at the same time, by not keeping that placeholder in, and, and, and reducing it to a dollar, if it does, for, um, whatever reason, take a little bit longer till July 1st, you know, that, um, to get the funding, then we're looking at an additional year before, uh, this can even be brought up again. So i- it's a matter of earmarking the funds to keep things moving, you know, with the hope and the understanding that Hamilton is moving in good faith forward, um, you know, with the town, but at that point, at this point, we really can't rely on anybody else. And we have to just sort of take what's directly in front of us, and, you know, what we feel is best for the district, and, you know, for the students, when, you know, we vote this budget forward. And I actually think, so that's why I actually think keeping it in would be the right, right decision.
Even if, even if from a practical matter, it's, it's much easier to reduce numbers than to add new items, right, so. There's, there's opportunities to reduce it from 73,000 dollars, $73,000 to a dollar. You can't go the other way.
And what happens if Hamilton doesn't come up with this, this money? What do we do?
We would have it in our budget.
We already have the money in the budget.
If you keep it in the budget, it would happen for the next year.
For how, for how long after that?
Well, as long as you serve the year.
So we're only talking about a single year operating budget, so, again, back to the recommendation, no clarity around the Wenham. So, um, so, we wanted to recommend an SRO for the next school, for the next school year, but without a commitment from Hamilton, at, at the moment, I mean, hopefully it's gonna happen.
We think it's gonna happen.
Right, so, in order to make it happen on day one, if we have it in our operating budget, we have certainty that it will happen on day one, right? Assuming the superintendent and the police chief can work together, and put in place an MOU, and MOU, and all those kinds of things, right, the procedural stuff. But without that, if there isn't funding, then, to Gene's point, then there's, there's nothing in the operating budget.
That part I understand, I just wanna know what happens to this SRO. If Hamilton doesn't come up with the money, we as a school committee can-
Yep, it's in our operating budget, essentially-
Cut that position.
We can fund it.
Right.
We can fund it for a year.
Or, or remove it.
Or remove it, is the question.
Next year, but that would be part of next year's-
Yeah, forget about next year, this is just, this is just-
This is just for FY20.
This is one operating in your budgets.
This person would be laid off.
Well, this person doesn't exist-
The committee would vote, need a vote to, to eliminate that position.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and this person would be laid off.
Well, they would be laid off, but that would be the decision of the Police Department, 'cause they're not our employee. We would have to somehow have a contract that would allow us to get out of it. So, and-
Therein lies one suggestion for a agreement.
In absence of an agreement, we don't know if we can cancel it next year or not, because we don't have an agreement.
We don't have anything.
Yeah.
All we have is our recommendation to fund $73,000 to ensure funding for an SRO to begin the new school year.
Right, to come up with the agreement.
If that's removed, we have nothing. At the moment.
You're confident that it's gonna happen, though, that's what I've been hearing, that you're confident that-
We don't, we don't know.
So, I, I can, I can say, I, I believe that Hamilton is acting in, in good faith, um, to fund this fully, but, I can't make any promises, you know, and at the end of the day, I have to look at it from, you know, a school board, uh, school committee perspective, in saying, do I feel that the, um, introducing an SRO into the district is the right choice and the best, best choice for the district and for the students, right? The-
I'm just hearing contradictory statements, saying on the one hand, we're confident we're gonna get the money, but we should put the money in place anyway.
So, well, it's not, they're not contradictory statements, right? The, the way we really have to look at it, is, it's the placeholder. And whether or not, in, in really-
There's still a timing issue, too.
Right.
I mean, just think about it practically from that-
Time out for a second, Peter. So there's a host community agreement between the town of Hamilton and Green Meadow Farms, right?
Yeah.
That, that, in, that includes a $73,000 amount, once the operation begins to produce revenues, right? So, and I don't know the exact specifics of the agreement, but I think that's the essence of it, right? So there isn't clarity around when they will produce revenues, and therefore make a payment to the town in connection with the, the host community agreement, right? So without that clarity, we've incorporated a $73,000 placeholder for one year, to ensure we can have a school resource officer in place in September. So, nobody's, nobody's suggesting that people aren't working in good faith, because they are.
So can I ask-
It's all about timing, that's it.
Can I ask a question about the $73,000, then? So, in asking around town, $73,000 is a lot of money for a police officer to make, that's way above the average of a police officer. And this police officer would only be working part-time for us, so I'm a little interested in knowing why we're budgeting $73,000 for something that probably is not gonna cost $73,000.
So, a- as I put in my memo, and, and what you got on Friday, it was the number that we got from Chief Stevens. It's as simple as that. That's the number.
In, 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 let's remember for a second, you know, really put this in perspective. You know, due to the regional agreement, and the apportionment agreement, we're really, we're not arguing at $73,000 here. We're actually arguing $27,000, and whether or not Wenham picks up that $27,000. Because the rest is paid for Hamilton, whether it's 100% or 66%. So, we're, we're, so it's not a $73,000, um, argument, we're having a $27,000 sort of discussion, I didn't mean to say argument.
Well, we're having a $73,000 discussion because somebody's gonna pay $73,000, doesn't matter who it is, it's the people who live in our community.
And I don't think the discussion is that we don't want an SRO, it's, um, it's who's gonna pay for this SRO, and I feel like if we put it in our budget, and then Hamilton, it's like a double type tax payment, and, you know, somehow, we've gotta really figure out how we're gonna, you know, work on this budget, because it's really high to put forth to the, um, towns.
I, I don't, how's it a double tax?
Because if you, if we have it in our budget, and Hamilton has it in our budget, and we both go to town meeting, we've double budgeted it. But we haven't really, because obviously, if Hamilton has it in their budget, we would obviously take it out of our budget if Hamilton got back to us and we got all of the things in place.
We're not, we're not gonna pay the SRO $146,000 accidentally, so.
Correct.
So, I also, um, noted at the, um, the meeting last week, that both, um, Hamilton and Wenham have a OPEB schedule that is ramping up slowly, and it's gonna, um, hopefully be funded over a 30-year process. And I feel like, we maybe are being too aggressive in jumping from zero to a quarter of a million dollars in one year, and that, um, it is important to make a significant amount of money as a contribution, the, um, the $40,000 that we promised two years ago and then did not deposit, really was, um, a token amount. So, I would think that we could, um, extend our time to maybe be a 35, 37-year process, by ramping up a little bit slower, um, maybe just putting in $125,000 this year, um, moving up to the 250 next year, and then moving up, um, to the plateau amount in the future years. I think it would do a lot to say that we are sharpening our pencils, and trying to really scrub the budget down to the necessities, um, you know, and that-
So, on a 35,000, I mean, a $35 million, um, it's worth looking for, not assessment, um-
Liability.
Liability, you know, $250,000 is actually a low ramping up. Right, I mean, we have to sort of think about the scale of the numbers we're looking at here. Um, and, you know, a 30-year plan is, is, you know, quite extended. Excuse me, um, beyond probably some of our lifetimes in the room, so. You know, and the feedback that we received from, you know, the towns last week, you know, Hamilton was very much in favor of the, um, OPEB, the, the plan that, um, Jeff had put together, and, you know, the feedback we're getting from Wenham, not to put words in anyone's mouth, was that, um, it was a, a good plan, even though the town, you know, couldn't afford it, is really what, what was put, um, out there. So, you know, while I do understand what, you know, what you're saying, the, you know, i- i- it is a large number, there's no getting around that, right? But at the same time, i- it's, it's a large number that we have to fund. And, and, and we're looking at a 30-year plan on funding it, excuse me.
And if it was a 35-year plan, it would still be funded, it would just be funded five years later. Or 37-year plan, it would just be funded seven years later. And that way, the cost is distributed over a longer period of time, so it's not such a big hit to one group of people.
I would say that both the town of Hamilton and the town of Wenham are on 30-year tracks. Um, but even if you take the town of Ham- Hamilton's OPEB liability, and the town of Wenham's OPEB liability, add them together, you still don't get two-thirds of our OPEB liability.
They have much fewer numbers, much better.
And just why you have to realize that by-
Much fewer employees than we do.
But by stretching out the, um, terms of the deal also, you're actually, we'd be paying more money in the long run. Right, so, is that-
Not if it's a single payer healthcare system.
Unfortunately, that's not on the table this evening, or under our control.
So-
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, we never questioned why it's 73,000, if, I'm just discovering now that this is way above the salary, we never asked why 73?
It's the number that the police chief gave us.
No, I understand that, but we didn't-
So it's fully loaded costs with benefits, and healthcare, and all those kinds of things.
That's not the salary, that's, that's everything.
It's a fully loaded cost.
It's salary plus everything.
It's the fully loaded cost that the chief gave us.
Right.
That's just not, but this, that's not what the office is gonna make.
So typically, an SRO is a, a very experienced officer, not somebody you hire, they, they have to be, you know, thoroughly trained, right? Usually it's a very experienced officer, that's not, like our teachers, that's not at the bottom of the pay scale. And then you add to it, you know, 15,000 to $20,000 in benefit costs, and that's how you get there, so. I don't think a $53,000 salary, or a $58,000 salary, once you take out the cost of benefits, is out of the ordinary. But I'll defer to Chief Stevens, that's the number he gave to Mike and I.
Alright, thank you.
But this is not an annual salary, this is, this is an amount that is only for a short period, shortened period of time, it's not an annual salary.
All I can say is that's the number that Chief Stevens gave us.
Okay.
So, I, I didn't analyze 73,000 on a $35 million budget to really kind of nail down those individual components. We relied on his knowledge of his Police Department, and his advice on what to put in our recommendation, that's simply what it represents.
So, I would move that we amend the motion to decrease the total expenditures by a number I would have to add. 'Cause I can't do math at this time in the day. To decrease the budget by $198,000, um, that, which would include $73,000 for an SRO, whatever line item that would be in, and $125,000 for OPEB, whichever DESI line item that would be in.
Second?
Okay, so discussion on the amendment.
Alright, discussion on the amendment. Uh, I just wanna reiterate that I, um, by removing the SRO from the budget as a placeholder, I think puts the district at risk of not having an SRO come July 1, um, which is the goal of-
I thought the goal was to have them start on August 26 with the students.
So.
Was I wrong on that? Are they starting-
Our recommendation is for the, the SRO to be in place on the first day of school. But that means, in terms of training and other things, I, I would defer to Chief Stevens.
Okay.
Uh, I, I definitely think we run the risk of not having that possible. And, you know, again, I'll just reiterate that, I think the, um, 30-year, uh, apportionment schedule, not apportionment schedule, sorry. OPEB, um, schedule is a sound, uh, financial policy that the district should be looking forward, looking to, to, um, assure that we fund all our liabilities in, in the future. And, you know, even, even though it is a large pill to swallow, um, you know, excuse me, prolonging it is, is not gonna do any, do anything for saving the district money, especially when you look at the long-term costs. Anything else? Alright, uh, all those in favor of the amendment? Three, all those opposed? Okay, so the amendment does not pass. Um, now we're gonna vote on the original motion, if we're done with. So, all those in favor of the operating bu- uh, FY20 operating budget, as stands?
So we're voting on the-
The budget.
The whole budget.
The original motion on the amendment.
Original fully loaded budget on the top there.
Peter, the motion that's on the screen to your left. Which is essentially our, the rec- our recommendation from December 19, it hasn't changed.
So this is the budget for the year now?
Yep, correct.
This is it?
FY20, yep.
No other changes can be made to this?
You can reduce the budget at any time.
As we go, right, so if Hamilton comes through with the funding for the SRO, we can reduce, you can't add, you can reduce, though.
This creates a ceiling, if you want.
Well, you can add through a town meeting, but it's a painful process.
Yeah, you can, yeah, right. Excuse me, there's always a way, right? Um, so all those in favor of the proposed budget as it's, uh, reads on the board, on the slide? Five opposed? Two? Okay, can we move on to the second budget? The budget is, uh, sorry, the motion is-
No, it's the same budget, it's the assessment.
It's how you can apportion things. The Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee votes to assess the towns of Hamilton-Wenham a combined total of $29,896,119 as amount necessary to operate and maintain the district, as well as pay debt service for fiscal year 20. The district's assistant superintendent shall determine the amount apportioned to each town, and the district's treasurer shall certify such amounts to the respective treasurers of each town within 30 days of this date.
Second?
Yeah, discussion on this, and this is just the, um, the apportionment, right, so this is just really a technicality.
So this is the byproduct of the expense budget that was just-
So, all those in favor? Six, seven, it's unanimous. Excellent, now it's time to start FY21.
No, there's a lot of marketing to do, between now and April.
Yep.
So we got this, I really, I, I believe in this budget, I, I believe in, in, um, what's being put out there. I am not afraid to go out and speak to the masses in favor of-
I believe the towns need to find other sources of revenue besides property taxes.
Oh, come tomorrow night, we'll start charging for leaf pickup in Wenham. Oh, come tomorrow night, we'll start charging for leave pickup in Wyndham.
I would completely agree with you. I completely agree with you.
All right.
I agree with you on that one.
Definitely. All right, so now we are going to approve the office personnel contract, or take a look at the office personnel contract. Mike, do you want to lead us in this, or Jeff?
Okay. So, this is the tentative agreement that we reached with the office personnel unit. The terms are a three-year agreement that was, would start retroactively on July first of two thousand and eighteen and run through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one, so it's a three-year contract. We have cost of living increases that would be applied to the salary schedule of two-and-a-half percent a year for each of those three years. And then, obviously, because we're ha- more than halfway through the first year in this deal, there would be a retroactive pay for the, for the current year. Number three, we're amending the professional development language in Article twenty to include the following: each bargaining unit member who works at least forty hours per week is eligible to request reimbursement for up to two courses per year. Members who less, work less than forty hours per week are only eligible for one course per year. The language before was not clear on that, and so people who work less than forty hours per week were actually eligible for more than one course per year. For number four, we're gonna add language that the district reserves the right to maintain a list of substitute secretaries that the district can utilize to cover for unit members when they are out. And this is, we have similar language in with the custodians contract. Number five, we're going to add language that says all positions covered by the contract fall into one of two categories, either one, full-year positions, or two, school-year positions. Full year is defined as full-time twelve months per year, and school year is defined as a hundred and eighty-four workdays per year, which shall mirror the teacher work schedule annually. And this is really to kind of clean up, we had a lot of different positions that were not really defined in this contract, and so, well, this is really cleaning up the language and saying, you either work as a secretary, either a twelve-month employee, or a school-year employee.
Does that school year still have the option to be paid over twelve months with the teachers?
Yeah, there's multiple options for everybody.
They have options for that, yes.
So, are the school secretaries gonna be full year? Because usually the schools are closed during July.
Well, that's, that was one of the things, so there was...
They've always been full year.
They've always been in the full-year category, and so, we're gonna, gonna actually do that.
So, are they going to be in the full-year category, or are they gonna be in the hundred-and-eighty-four day category?
They've always been in the full-year category.
They've always been full year.
Okay, so will they be working the full year, or will they still have July off?
They will, they, they will be required to work a full year, they can use their vacation time to take the month of July off or any other time during the year.
They have vacation, they have vacation days.
So, it's creating clarity where clarity was in, was absent from the existing contract.
Correct. Let's see, for number six, for school-year employees, any time past a hundred-and-eighty-four workdays must be approved in advance by the assistant superintendent. For number seven, we're not changing the existing paid holiday schedules for either school-year employees or full-year employees. Number eight, we're replacing the current sick leave lang- bank language with the proposed, which is attached, that's the exact language we used with the teachers. Number nine is to eliminate the staff assignment notification requirement in Article twenty-five. I think we had to notify by, I forgot, there was a date.
End of July.
End of July, and we've, we're eliminated that. We've, number ten, we've removed the data entry specialist position from the office personnel unit. In this case, the, the position is not, not akin to, to any of the other clerical staff that we have, and so, we're gonna remove it.
It's actually a confidential position?
Yeah.
And confidential positions don't belong in u- units?
Right. Number eleven is to remove the language around the agency service fee, because of the most recent Supreme Court decision that outlawed those. And number twelve is Article fifteen, which changes the insurance language to mimic, mimic the contract language contained in the teacher's contract.
How did we go about this contract? Just to go along with what, how, the teachers, to go in line with the teachers? And, and I was just curious also, if, wasn't school committee supposed to approve you going forward to do this, look at this contract?
You did.
You did.
You gave us...
I, oh, I thought it was only teachers, I don't...
No, it was all three.
So, the motion from November eighth, two thousand and seventeen, which is approved in our minute, says, and the motion was made by Carrie and seconded by David, "I move that the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School Committee appoint Mike Harvey and Jeff Sands to negotiate on behalf of the school committee with the teachers' union."
We did the teachers' union first, and then we did the other two.
But the authority to do that was never given. So...
I recall that it was. I wouldn't have spent my time negotiating with a unit, but...
So, if it was, then there, it was never recorded in any minutes.
I can't speak to them, I don't, I'm too busy to pour over the minutes. I know I was given the authority, along with the superintendent, to negotiate all three union contracts. And we did them.
That was never recorded in the minutes.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I think it was...
No, it was, it's not an executive session.
Those minutes haven't been made available to me to read, so I wouldn't know. So, if you could find those, that would be great.
I know for certain that we were given authorization to negotiate.
Correct.
When? I don't know when, I don't take minutes.
And I'm also interested in, I, you know, this is a summary, but I'm approving a whole contract, and I would be interested in getting a copy of a whole contract before I vote on it. I feel like if I had had the teacher's contract, I might have been more aware of what I was voting.
So, I would suggest that we table this until next meeting, if we can see a, a contract first before we vote on this.
You can make a motion to table it?
I move that the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School Committee tables the, looking at the personnel unit agreement until we see a full contract.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? It's four opposed. That's three. All right, so we'll table this, so we can see the whole contract. Topics for the next meeting.
I would like to see a copy of the executive session minutes that authorized negotiation of the contract.
So, all right, Stacy sits the other one, who is actually privy to those, if you can actually find those.
I'm actually not privy to before my time of those minutes. I don't have them unless they've been posted. I don't have them. I only have what got put in the minutes from January till now, because I only became secretary, and those were the only ones that I've been privy to.
So, we just approved meetings from over a year ago.
They were not in any of those meetings.
But I'm just saying that you're privy to more than just the past eight months, four months.
Well, no, I had them since Janu- like I said, before January of two thousand and eighteen, I am not privy to those executive session minutes, I do not have them.
I have them all in file folders at home, I've got every packet I've ever been handed, I'll find it.
I mean, I looked online, and there was nothing.
So, I, I, I don't know, I, I just have a hard time actually why we're sitting here arguing whether or not the administration has the power to negotiate the contract when that is their actual job to do so.
Actually, it's not.
Actually, it's not normal, David.
We were given the authorization in a meeting, in an executive session in Mike's office. And then we, we talked about upper thresholds.
Correct.
I don't know when that occurred, but it, it occurred in Mike's office, and we talked about all three unit areas. We sought the feedback from the school committee around upper thresholds of the value of the contract, so...
Right. And, and I just want to make it clear that I am not arguing with you and your authority at all. I, I just, that the movement this board has been making this past year is like a half step forward, three steps back in absolutely everything we do. The fact that we're wasting our time actually going through this when the budget, with the major parts of the contract are right in front of us, and the FY nineteen budget's already been approved with that two-point-five placeholder, and I'm willing to assume the FY twenty had the two-point-five placeholder, so two-thirds of this has actually already been voted and approved by this board. And there's some clarifying language in the contract, and, and we're arguing it and tabling this for a discussion. I think everyone wants to actually look at their priorities.
I'm feeling like I'm not gaining communication.
You're not getting communication?
Even communication is maybe you do, David, and not seen. I would like to see a contract because, you know, you know, some of the, one of the contracts that we just approved, the teacher's contract, if I had full, fully had seen it as opposed to like the footnotes, you know, it might have been a different vote.
Okay, I'm gonna take exception to that one. We saw a full contract, we were handed full contracts, we didn't leave the room with full contracts, but we were given actual pieces of paper that had the entire red line contract.
Contract is this big, Janice, we were not handed the contract.
I found the contract online, we were not given that, Janice.
I get variations of all three, so...
All right, so I just want to put this, and don't forget, these are contract, right, renegotiations, so these are changes in the contract.
Right.
It's the existing contract that is online, that you do, everyone does have access to, and then these are the changes to that contract.
Right, but the wording of the changes...
So, don't say you don't have the entire contract available, you can do the math.
The wording of these changes is not here, this is a highlight of...
All right, is there any other topics for next meeting?
So, um...
Should we stop negotiating with the custodians? We've got several meet, we can cancel everything.
I mean, between now and, and whenever, you know, if, if that, the minutes come up, then that's fine.
We have meetings scheduled.
But I'm just saying, if Mahala can find the minutes that say that, then it's fine.
Then please don't stop negotiating.
But it's not on Mahala to actually look at the minutes.
But, um...
I will do it.
It's her job to take the minutes.
I will do it.
Okay, then maybe they could be shared with the whole committee, and we could search them.
I don't even know what to say.
Um, so, for the next, personally, I've been sending out several emails trying to schedule a policy working group meeting, and I'm not getting any responses. So, I guess my question is, are we going to have a meeting, or are we just gonna wait until after the election? Because the MASC is willing to come and meet with us, and they do have a contract, and we are paying them, so, but if people are not interested in meeting, then we can just pay them and not meet.
I'm sorry, I thought I sent you dates.
You did, and then I, MASC was not available, so I emailed you guys back the dates that...
It was the seventh and the twentieth?
I, I can turn my computer on and look it up.
Yeah, the seventh and the twentieth.
I can't do the twentieth.
Okay, let's do the seventh.
School vacation.
Okay, so the seventh?
Sure.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Carrie, can you come on the seventh?
Of March?
Yep.
What time?
Seven? I don't know.
I'm actually not available on the seventh.
Can you give some dates when you are available, and I can check those against the ones that they're available?
Did they have a particular week night?
I sent the same email to you that she sent to me, so I can look it up.
I'm, in general?
I don't know, I can look it up. And are we gonna talk about the school calendar at the next meeting?
There's nothing to talk about the school calendar.
Okay, so the dates that were in our packet are different than the dates that are online, so ours...
So, the original calendar had us a hundred and seventy-nine days, we all missed it, and the business office picked it up and added a day.
Okay, so should we have voted it, or...
Are you gonna vote the last day of school on May first?
Okay. Should we have been notified that there was an error in that?
Why?
Because it's an item that we voted on that was wrong. Let's see, Dorothy Presser, what does she say? She's available on the seventh, the twentieth, the twenty-fifth, April second, third, and fourth. And then she can go out further in April, but at that point, we're really close to the election.
Twenty-fifth is good.
So... I actually think I'm not available on the twenty-fifth, but I have to look that up. I think that might have been, what day of the week is the twenty-fifth? Is that a school committee meeting?
Nope.
It's Monday.
Oh, it's a Monday, okay.
That is important.
What the hell?
I know, but I can do it right after that.
It's the counter open house night.
Right.
Oh.
So, I'll be there.
I can't find, I can't get...
Be in town.
Where's the calendar? March twenty-fifth. All right, Mike, are you available?
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a Dante's six-year remission.
That's awesome.
So, what time is the open house?
Five to seven.
Okay, so do you want to start at seven fifteen, or do you want to start at seven?
Seven's fine.
Okay.
It's just a color.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Any motion to adjourn?
I move that the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School Committee adjourn at nine-twenty-seven.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. unanimous.